On Sunday, so yeah, we're back up now. We're working our way back up to full ops, but...
Is it gonna cause a backlog for you now in the pilot production?
We're working on that, so yeah, we're working on the contingency plans right now.
Somebody's losing a holiday, isn't he?
Let's call the meeting to order. We're all present except for Tammy, and she will be absent this evening. Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of December the 5th, 2017.
Bill, I did have one question, and 8.1. The insurance thing there, I was just curious as to what we're waiving and why we're waiving it.
Well, that's a good question. There's a limited number of people that provide this insurance. Chris, you want to answer that? Because you're probably the best person. Come on up. Come on up to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Mayor, Commissioners, the excess insurance that we're carrying protects the city in the event of a catastrophic injury. We retain the first $1 million of liability, and then anything over that is shifted to the carrier. In this case, we've been using Midwest Employers for a number of years, and as a self-administered program, the other two that are available in the area through our broker would require a great deal of support documentation before they would provide a solid policy. They give a contingent policy upon the city meeting the requirements of being a self-administered company. Most municipalities have a third-party administrator, a company that's been administering the workers' compensation program for a number of years. We've only been self-administered for just a handful of years. We've got a good track record with Midwest. Because the cost of this policy is over $50,000, the purchase manual says it should go out for bid. We went out for bid last year. One of the other companies gave us a contingent bid upon filling out an incredible amount of paperwork that says we can do this by ourselves, and the other one wouldn't write the policy. Midwest's bid was only about $6,000 higher than the low bid last year when we bid this out. But Midwest provides value-added services that far exceed that difference, to include free training on any number of hazard reduction and workers' compensation issues, as well as if we need a Medicare set aside to protect Medicare's interests in a workers' compensation claim for an elderly employee who is eligible for Social Security or Medicare. They provide that set aside at no charge, which is a program that would probably cost between $10,000 and $12,000 per incident if we were to have an outside agency prepare that set aside for us.
What you're saying is there's only three companies in Oklahoma that provide this kind of insurance?
They're not even in Oklahoma, sir. There are three companies that the broker that we use offers policies through, and that one would give us a quote contingent upon, the other one wouldn't even quote it, and the third is Midwest Employers Casualty.
Do we have to use that broker?
I don't believe we have to, but this guy has been a former third-party administrator for the city of Enid, and he is familiar with the claims history for the city. And as a broker, he is a, or as a TPA, he's got a pretty good recommendation for the companies that can provide the coverage that we're looking for.
Well, I don't think we should be obligated to bid it out every year, but I think after a certain number of years, we really ought to try to go out and see if we can't get a more competitive bid.
I did bid it last year, and the final...
You didn't want one other person to bid.
Right, and the bid for Midwest was about $6,000 higher. It started out $16,000 higher, and I said, "It's out of line. I can't, you know, I'd like to continue our relationship with you. Can you work with us?" They brought it down $10,000. This year, it's $1,400 less than it was last year.
Yeah, they're going in the right direction.
I'm not accustomed to seeing the cost of insurance going down.
That's fairly unusual.
Pardon me?
Is everything the same?
Coverage and retention is the same. They provided estimates for retaining $100 and a quarter instead of, or I mean, a million and a quarter instead of a million, $16,000 less, but I don't think that that $16,000 provides a value for the amount of retention we would retain.
But as long as you've been involved with this, and we ever had to have used this insurance?
No, sir. We never had it before I came along.
And that's a good point. We added this, we didn't used to have it. We added it several years ago, Chris's recommendation. I think it was a good recommendation. What it does, it protects the city against claims over $1 million. If we did not have the insurance, we had a claim over $1 million, like every other claim, it would go, it would be a levy claim. It would go to the taxpayers, the property taxpayers, to pay it. So we thought it was wise, a good stewardship, to have this policy, but that is something for you to consider, too.
What is our premium run on that year?
It's, well, the next year it will be $85,000, and it was apparently $1,400 more than that. It's about $87,000 this year, is that right? Chris, it was $1,400 more than what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
If the Commission wanted us to bid that out this year, how fast could we do it? What would be the impacts?
It would take probably a minimum of 90 days, because there would be very significant amount of communication back and forth between the vendors, the insurers, and the city with providing different risk assessments that they need to underwrite the policy.
Okay, but we could do it if the Commission wanted?
But we would then be, the policy comes due the first of the year, and we would be without a policy, without coverage for that period.
True, or we could try to work on a three-month policy, or we could just be without coverage like we used to be.
That's correct.
Or we could actually bring it, you know, before us, before we, we're running out of time.
True, true. We, it expires, I guess, at the end of the month.
Yeah.
Our thinking was that this was the best route, but if you would like us to bid that, we can certainly do that. You heard Chris, it'll take about three months. What we would probably try to do is maybe negotiate a short-term policy if we could. If we couldn't, we'd probably just be without until we could come back with the results of the bid.
I don't think we ever need to not have the catastrophic insurance in this day and age.
Well, we thought about, when we talked about it, I don't, Chris is probably very familiar with cases around the state, but in the line of work that we do, we have some risky occupations, particularly public safety, public works. We deal with big pieces of equipment, so there's a lot of liability in city stuff.
I start this process in October each year. It takes, even with the company that we're just renewing the policy, it takes 75 days to 90 days just to provide the information that they need to underwrite the new policy. So it's not a, it's not walking into Allstate and saying, "I want a $1 million policy," and here you go.
Is this mostly what claims-ish information about claims that we've had during the previous year?
Claims history, what our exposure would be, type of vehicles we operate, how many people are in the vehicles we operate, do we have aircraft, do we have watercraft, payroll by class code?
That doesn't change every year, though.
The vehicles changes very little, but I run the numbers every year to give them accurate information so we can get the best quote possible. And our payroll by class code changes every year, not significantly, but enough that if I give them last year's information, it's not an accurate quote. Now, the $87,000 that you see is the estimated premium. Ever since I've been doing this, we've always received a premium refund in excess of $7,000 or $8,000, if I remember correctly, each year, because then they audit the estimated payroll by class code versus the actual audited numbers after they come out. And so we end up getting a refund, so this $87,000 you see is really closer to $80,000 by the time it's all said and done.
Is that handled by the city attorney's office?
It's handled by me, sir.
Do what?
It's handled by me.
The three-month estimate that you said, is that to go through the same broker or to go a different broker?
That would be through the same broker, and I would have to ask, to be honest with you, I would have to ask him for recommendations for another broker, because I don't know any.
Okay. Is this the product that CompSource provides to any other municipalities in Oklahoma?
I don't know that they provide excess insurance. I think they provide workers...
I know they do the...
The regular insurance.
Regular insurance for businesses, but I wasn't sure if they provided an over and above.
I don't know that they do.
Okay. They're kind of the big one in Oklahoma.
Mm-hmm, and that would be if the poor CompCommission said we couldn't be self-insured anymore, that would be one of our avenues of providing coverage.
Okay.
Just looking for information, it's a pretty significant amount of money, and I just think we need to take a look at it periodically.
We will follow your direction upstairs when you vote on it.
Okay, if you want to.
Might be good this year, but a plan might be for next year, instead of planning in October, looking in June.
Okay.
Get a little bit ahead, we're not in, oh, we have to do it now, or we're stuck.
And if the underwriters will issue a policy quote that far out, is the other question. I don't know that they will, I don't know that they won't. I'll attack our broker with that question and see what we can come up with.
But June would maybe get a, give us time to see if there are other brokers and things like that.
Yes.
I think is the idea. Right in the same corner next year.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Chris. Anything else?
Mayor, I was just gonna mention, and I already did mention to you, can you scroll back? I think it's item 5. something, 5.2. Can you click on the background for that, Dana, please? You're gonna decide this upstairs. However, I just wanted to bring your attention, as you recall, when you approved bringing the committee back via a resolution, three of you, you want to appoint three of you to that group, so hopefully you're thinking about that and can figure that out upstairs. I just bring that to your attention. That's all I have, Mayor.
Three out of five, maybe, are gonna be on that committee.
Yeah, three of you are gonna be on there, so...
I assume we have volunteers.
I'm gonna find out upstairs, I think, unless you want to talk about it now, and then upstairs again.
No, no, I think upstairs is soon enough.
Okay.
We're gonna have runtime here, huh?
And I'm not a dictator, but we'll have to. Anything else, Gerald?
Nope, nothing from me.
Item three, update on Cleveland and Chestnut construction.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Glad to present an update on the Cleveland and Chestnut intersection and the Cleveland Boulevard update. Projects are ready to go to construction, and we want to cover where they're actually at. Well, it looks like we'll have to have a little work on the slide to get to the next one.
Is the button not working?
Nope, it's currently...
You get an assist here from...
There we go. Scope of the work on these projects. Scope of the work, of course, on the intersection project is five-laning, the north-south lanes, three-laning, the east-west lanes, and there is some significant storm drainage work being done, new signalization, of course, and we have a trail, the trail on the northwest, yep, northwest corner, Cleveland and Chestnut, and sidewalks on the other corners. We have a map here, I want to show you the location again. As you can see, Highway 81, Van Buren, over to the right side of the screen, and the Northern Railroad tracks moving up across to the northwest, and we've covered at the intersection, south of those tracks and west of 81, the, in red, the location of the intersection improvements, and then in the yellow shading is the Cleveland Boulevard. Right along a half-mile worth of work, including the intersection, you can see the apartments in this area which have developed on the west side. Just to go through the plans a little bit more detail, these are copies of the construction plant. This set here is actually on Chestnut, so north is up, this is Chestnut, and to the right is Cleveland, as shown there. These large dash mark lines are storm sewer systems that will go into backup system work and at a high level, and then we have the pavement shown here, and the lighter colored area on the north side is the trail, of course sidewalks on the other corners. That's the top presentation, and on just below that is the extension of Chestnut, which would be just to the east, it connects right here and go east. This would be the improvements seen at that place, with the storm drain and sidewalks as well. Now, this next slide is turned a little bit, north is to the right, this is actually on Cleveland Street. You can see the intersection on the right side of the screen in Chestnut that we just looked at, and then the improvement would start south of Cleveland and extend north, including improvement of a box several hundred feet south to the drainage off of the intersection and away. And then just, that's the top, and below that is the extension of Cleveland to the north, extension of the intersection project to the north, and this ends up, I think, right between the driveways, two existing driveways for the commercial store development, Walmart Market on the west side. You can see the storm drainage work involved there. This also shows existing pavement that was done under prior development and is in place, as well as some of the storm drainage work that was done in prior development. Okay. Cleveland Boulevard. This is Cleveland Boulevard, it starts just north of the intersection project, actually this is where the intersection project ends to the left side of the screen, and you can see the storm drain works, the pavement work, and the trail work and sidewalks that are being improved for this project. We have, starting at the intersection, going north to the top, and then the extension of that just to the south. You can actually see here, the, on the, on the lower drawing, the driveway approach for the apartments, which is in place, and then the final page is the extension out to the railroad tracks, railroad tracks. I want to point out, this is the Boulevard, does have a median in place. It will include certain improvements. I want to go back just a minute, see if I've covered those. Okay, I'll cover those. It covers certain improvements, which are the course of payment, four-lane all the way through, medians in the center, as well as lighting, special lighting through this improvement, and the trail on the west side and sidewalk on the east side. I'm gonna bring you up speed on the invoices that were presented in June from Department Transportation on the Cleveland and Chestnut intersection and on the Cleveland Boulevard, and you can see, I put across the top here, the construction estimates that were provided, federal funds that were being, would be used against this project, and what was considered remaining to be the city share, and that actually was, that total amount of $1,929,641 was invoiced from ODOT and has been paid by the city for this project. Very good and well, but we thought that might be a little short, and actually, it was. What I want to present here is an update from the November 22nd from ODOT. This is based on the bids that they've received for the project. Again, we had the Cleveland-Chestnut intersection and the Cleveland Boulevard on the right. Construction costs has changed, see here, it's increased. They actually have added in the, what I call management fee, but it's the ODOT inspection, management, and coordination fees that they charge to inspect these projects. They provide inspection services on these, and there's a fee for that. The funds from the federal funds are still the same, $1 million each. That did change the amount of the city's share, and so it's had a total construction cost, cost for the projects, both projects, a little over $4.6 million. City share, again, is just under $2.9 million, and I'll go back, we paid in $1.9 million. And then finally, funding analysis. Total project cost, just under $5 million, as shown on the previous slide. Federal funds stayed the same, city funds paid in. So the, this is the amount that ODOT will be invoicing the city for to complete the Now, in the budget, we did anticipate that ODOT would have some additional funds, and it may run over some, they'd have a, because we knew that their inspection costs weren't in their original invoice. So we did provide some additional funding. This is the funding that's available in the budget for this project, $863,756.50. So we did estimate to some extent, however, our estimate is short by about $100, a little over $105,000 on the cost. So this money is available, was budgeted, to cover these costs that could be anticipated to come, and we, it looks like we're a little short in that line item. Project schedule, contract award was December 4th, so the Highway Commission or Transportation did award the project to commence construction locally. The anticipated start date is, it takes them, they get under contract and to award and to pre-construction and settle stuff, but it could be any time between March and May of 2018 that we see work actually take place, start on the project, depending on the ODOT schedules and how they coordinate it with the contractor. Construction time is, for the two projects, is 475 days. I will point out that the project is generally constructed under traffic. There will be a few weeks, probably two to four weeks, that the intersection at Cleveland Street will be closed, south intersection, basically to make, coordinate to make that final connection of all the phases that they will be constructing. So that kind of brings up the date on the project. I want to discuss a little bit the next project that will be coming along.
Robert, on that one...
Go ahead, George.
We know that there's development that's gonna occur on the east side of Cleveland, and I don't know if we knew that when we first started this project. Does this, is this gonna be enough of an improvement to accommodate that additional traffic that might be coming from that area as well?
The Cleveland Street improvement will be adequate to carry the traffic development on both sides. This Boulevard design was developed, and there will be, you are correct, there will be a, actually, right here, actually, we show a drive approach for the new development on the east at this location. There, yeah, there may be a secondary drive that wouldn't cut the median somewhere to the north in the development site, so those have been anticipated. So yes, Boulevard has, yeah, been designed, we looked at traffic impact.
So we don't think we'd need any additional traffic lights or anything like that to accommodate the other development?
Robert, I'm gonna jump in and add, we did do a traffic study specifically looking at that, and he asked potentially a traffic signal at that turn, and he was telling you where the apartments are on the other side. Will be necessary based on commercial development and Gene Anderson's development. I think we've agreed with that PUD that at the point that he starts the commercial development, he will need to provide the traffic signalization there.
We've known about the commercial and the residential development all along, because that's, that's where the retention pond is right now on the west side.
Right.
Had to swap with the developers.
Yeah, I was thinking about the east side, but yeah, okay.
That's what I'm talking about, we've known about that east side.
Okay, yeah, I just know, if this was two years before that, you know, I haven't been around that long, so I wanted to make sure that this didn't get well started before the other one got considered. That's fine.
You'll hear a lot more about it.
All right.
The money, the $5 million, does that include all the utilities being replaced?
Those have already been done.
The total?
No, those have already been done. We've already completed that work. That's certainly not, this is just the construction dollars. Utilities have already been relocated out of separate funds, and no, that's just the roadway, construction, the storm drain, the trail, sidewalk, and the paving and the signalization. No utilities.
Does that mean they have to be heightened? You have a lot of dirt to bring in there?
It has to be widened, it has to be widened. The dust lines do get filled in, and the storm, as you can see here, the road will, it's hard to see, but the road will get widened, so there's a lot of dirt to bring in to widen the road. There are storm drain systems going in throughout the system to carry that drainage system, but the grades will stay fairly close to what they are now.
Will you have any jogs in there going south from Chestnut to Maple?
No, that's a future phase of the project.
It's gonna be straight?
Yeah, I'll show you, this is Cleveland, this is Cleveland, this is Chestnut, so the improvements going south are this larger shaded area here, the existing pavement, this is a little dashed in area in the center, so there is, there's no necessarily, there's no necessary jogs. There's a little transition here, as you can see, to tie in, there will be a little transition in asphalt to tie into the existing pavement, but there's no jogs.
The amount of money that we're paying, we have to pay all of it in advance?
We paid our section, the remaining section. The question is, we will get an invoice from Department of Transportation for those funds. I suspect we'll get it fairly, fairly soon, but I don't know what her schedule is for putting out those invoices, but they, but they have already...
We do pay in advance?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
ODOT will not proceed unless we pay in advance, is that correct?
That's gotta be...
Is that the 80/20? We pay 20%?
No, it is not. We, I'll go back, I'll go down. Under, this is not an 80/20 program, it is, it is, the federal funds, they will provide up to $1 million on each project. So actually, here we're paying, let's go to this, $2 million, we're paying $1.7 million, and they're paying $1 million, so we pay a little bit over, potentially over 50% of the construction cost. They, their funds, they used to be $750,000, they have moved it up to they'll do $1 million on a project.
How does that factor into the state legislature?
I don't think it does, because it's federal funds. These are federal funds that are handled through the Department of Transportation, and these projects, that they have let this project, so it's, so these funds are available from the state, and will proceed, with on the payment, our funds, the project will proceed on schedule. I don't think it's tied into the legislative body on their funding, because this is federal funds, just handled by the Department of Transportation. Okay? You have questions? Okay. Didn't want to cover the next Cleveland Street improvement or the next phase, which would be from the railroad tracks to Willow Road, Cleveland Street Railroad, yep. The roadway design work is under contract, we screwed that contract just shortly back here, so that's under contract in this budget year and proceed. However, there are three other items that we'll see come up in the, in the future years. One of them is the railroad's storm sewer system, because we have to get the storm sewer system, we have a significant amount of stormwater coming down Cleveland to get into our detention pond, and will go under the railroad tracks. We feel that we'll probably have to contract with a subcontractor that actually is approved by the railroad, basically a railroad subcontractor to complete the design of that, of that crossing and that drainage structure, principally because the way it interferes with the railroad. And then we also have right-of-way acquisition and utility relocations that we anticipate, we complete the plans this year, next year's budget, we anticipate budgeting the, moving the acquiren property if we need to, and we probably will, at least some, and movement, relocation of utilities, and then the, then we should be ready for, excuse me, the following year to go to construction funding in fiscal year 2020. And I think that works pretty good. We need to get the funding from ODOT, we, you know, we've got, we have actually two projects underway this year, two $1 million projects, so we think we can go back and ask for another $1 million in about three years, which works out real good on this project.
On the Boulevard, the median, how wide is the median? Is it just a concrete median? Is that what we're talking about, or is it...
It's a, it's a grass, sod median, it's a sod median right now, and the width, I think, about, I think it's about eight, about eight feet, I think. I'll have to check, but it's about, it's not, it is, as you can see, let me get back here, my pointer, this is two lanes here, and this is the width of the median, so it's probably, probably a little over eight feet, probably about 10 feet, I need to check. It's about an eight to 10-foot median.
And then extends...
Because this is 24 feet here, and that's median width, and it, what has, it extends, this is the railroad tracks here, extended, leaves a place for a left-turn lane into Rolling Oaks Drive, of course, and then it is continuous down to, there's an opening for the apartments driveway, which by agreement with the PUD will be signalized when this develops commercially, and then it's median down. It stops just on the north side of the Walmart Market driveways, those will be, have, those have left turn... those will be, have, those have left turn lanes.
Are there any right-of-way problems going from the railroad?
No, all the right-of-way's been acquired, been approved by, by state and by us, so it's all in place.
How close are you going to get to the properties on the west side from the railroad track to Willow?
Okay, now.
It's pretty close in that right-of-way.
Now, all the right-of-way's been acquired for this project, on your north of the railroad track, we have 40 feet on the west side, and probably 33 to 40 feet on the east side, so.
That's what I'm talking about, north of the railroad.
The north, no, none of that right-of-way's been acquired, and we don't know where the road will be exactly yet, because we're just in the initial stage of the design. But there is houses all along, units all along the west side, and there is more open area on the east side, that's correct.
Robert, with the strength of the concrete with ODOT, is it higher than that which we require, you know, when we're pouring streets for the city, or does it exceed the strength? Would it be, you know, OD?
They have, they have their own special specification, but I think the strength is, I think the strength is the same 3,500 PSI. Now, they do, on their structures, require 4,000 PSI, which is a little higher than we require on our drainage structures and the standards, but I think the pavement is, the strength is comparatively same, it's the same 3,500 PSI concrete. However, they do have their own mixed design, which they approve separately.
Do you know how the city requires the, oh, the curing compound? Will they be laying that down?
Yes, they require, yes, they require the concrete ought to be cured, yes.
You call that, Norman?
Curing compound?
Yes.
This is wax?
Actually, our specification on curing, it came from the ODOT standard.
Now, Robert, the intersection will be concrete, the rest of Cleveland, the railroad tracks will be asphalt, is that right?
The project has been PC concrete throughout, however, we, we may well, with the contractor, do some evaluate, some engineering evaluation, and there may be an option to convert, and I'll go back a little bit, to convert, maybe some cost savings to go to an asphalt pavement for the, for the Boulevard, and I'm going to go back, this is the intersection work, and we typically want to maintain the major portion of the intersection for these transitions, it's PC concrete, because of the turning movements. Asphalt's a very good pavement, it can be made a very good pavement for roads and for links, but when you have large turning movements in signalized intersections, it can tend to rut a little bit, so we have stiffly an intersection stayed with PC concrete, because it removes that rutting possibility. But when you go to the, so that's for the intersection, but when you go to these upper areas, particularly the Boulevard through here, where we have limited turning movements, you know, we probably wouldn't want to concrete this intersection, but the through lanes can, could certainly be, asphalt would be acceptable, and that's something we will discuss with the contractor and see if there is a savings in converting in those areas.
So if there is, would those be handled through change orders in the future?
Yes, be a formal change order for the Department of Transportation.
Tell the commission, what's the drainage going to look like on the sides of the road? Is the drainage still going to be an open ditch, or is it going to be covered in these plans?
Yeah, this, the drainage will all be carried underground, these are the pipe systems shown here, sorry to bring a typical section, should have done it, the pipe system, but so all the drainage is covered underground, so it'll look very much, actually, it's already, if you go down in front of Walmart Market, it's already been done there. You have drainage systems in place, you have a trail here, and then you have a slope either up or down here, they're a little higher, so it comes up, and it's all grass. So yes, it's a flat area, it'll be, the storm system be carried underground, it'd be a trail and a sidewalk on each side, and then it will either go down to the existing ground or come up to the existing ground, such as done in Walmart Market, look just like, just like that, except it won't have those barriers out there, those will be gone, and give rid of those barriers for this project too, those.
Robert, what's the timeframe for four-laning Cleveland from Chestnut to Maple? Is it the last construction project?
Right now, because this is the, the next, next phase is, as we've set up, it's just paid to go to Willow, complete that, then the schedule calls for coming back and doing, and the next, following up that, the next phase would be from Chestnut down to Maple, yes. So this is just maybe constructed in fiscal year 20, so I would anticipate it would be a few years after this before you could go back for the matching funds.
Well, you're going to go from four lanes to two lanes at Chestnut going south.
Right, then back to four, right.
The long-term intent is to four-lane it all the way, which has to be the final phase.
And you, and you are correct, and that's intent, however, that's where you have, you have a limited number of turning movements there, so it probably is the best place to construct, to carry the flow. But the problem is, the problem is this is an important need, and we're probably another couple of years out before we can get additional funding from the state, so you know, you could always pursue it as a city, city-only project, but to get the state funding, because they have a limited amount of fund that can, we complete, compete for about $3 million a year on these funds, and we got $2 million this last year, so you can't get, it's very difficult to get that funding every year.
Well, we're going to have the same thing at Willow and Oakwood going west from four lanes to two.
Right, right, something, these projects always at the end some, somewhere, but we're making great headway, this, I think we are. Now we're down to questions.
Robert, did you mention who got the bid? We know who got the bid.
Cummins Construction got the bid locally, yes.
And then same contractor on Willow?
They are.
So that makes it easy for the transition.
That's correct.
How many bidders are you getting?
There was only two bidders on this project, Cummins Construction and Hudson Paving, yeah. But the, but the state had a large number of projects out to bid, a large, large number out at this, at this letting, they let, I think more than probably, they had a large number out to bid, so there was a lot of contractors bidding, they just had a whole lot of number of projects to bid on. No interruption of traffic on Cleveland until Willow Road is open, the contractor will have both those projects, Willow Road should be fully open for, you see, interruption of traffic on, on Cleveland, and even when it is interrupted, they'll be handling traffic on Cleveland until they get in well into the project, and then there will be a few weeks that we'll have to actually shut off traffic to make that final connection, but basically it'll be constructed under traffic.
Doesn't this take a lot longer because you have to keep traffic flowing?
Probably does, does have an effect on the bid, I'm, I would project that it would have an effect on the bid if I was bidding it, and if he was bidding, I would predict it would, and again, it's 475,000 days, so, but, you know, it's one of the benefits try to provide, keep, keep the, provide service and access to the, to the public, particularly we have a large commercial facility there. Okay?
On these projects, does, who selects the successful bidder? Is it you, is it us, or is it ODOT, or is it?
It's Department of Transportation, they, under these projects, we provide the engineering design, utility relocations, the right-of-way, and then provide that to ODOT, and then they contract out, they bid out the work under the standards and specifications, and then they, then they administer the contract. Although we have a good working relationship with the local district on these projects, and we have, on, on resolution of any issues that come up, but it's ODOT contract.
Good, well, and I was pleased to see that a local contractor got those two anyways, so.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
They don't have to move a lot of equipment to go.
No, that's right, yeah.
Any other questions? Item four, is that you, Robert?
Willow Road, yes.
Willow Road?
Update on Willow Road, yes, sir, Mayor and Commissioners. An update on this project, which is the last federated urban project, federated urban project we have ongoing with the city and ODOT. Again, the scope of the project was about 40, 400 feet of four-laning from Cleveland to the intersection of Willow and Oakwood, which was improved prior to that. Does have a 10-foot trail on one side, 6-foot sidewalk from, on one section from Oakwood Drive to Cleveland. Again, have an area which north is up to the up, and you can see the burden of the railroad going from the center of the road. Cleveland is shown on the right, and this is Oakwood Road on the left. The work that we show, the work actually starts in the pavement, which is just shy of, of Oakwood and just shy of Cleveland, and then provides for four lanes of pavement. Go through the plans, this is Phase 1, it's from Cleveland Street going west to Nicholas Oaks Drive, center Nicholas Oaks Drive, so that is the location, you can see an existing pavement, the new pavement width, and there's a storm drain box here and a storm drain pipe system in place. And again, we're completed, storm drain system's complete in place, box culvert's been completed, opened up and running, curb gutters in place, all, the base pavement is in place, most of pavement's in place. The trail and the sidewalk's been placed along this section, so it's, it's completed. What is remaining is the final surfacing, and basically on these asphalt payments, they'll do the final two inches as the last thing, so it all fits together instead of piecemeal. Tends to give you a better ride, and it works good, and then striping. Phase 2, this is from Oakwood Road, or from this edge of Oakwood Road, to Sleepy Hollow, and I showed in the top and the bottom section. Again, there is a extension of the box culvert there on Boggy Creek, it's been completed as well as pavement. So here, storm drain system's done, the box culvert extensions are done, curb gutters in place, the base pavement's all in place, and the trail was pretty well in place in this area. Remaining work, of course, that finishing, surfacing, and striping, which will come about at, at the end of the project. Phase 3, from Woodlands Drive to Willow Springs Drive, yeah, Willow, goes this way, I've shown it in two sections here, and you can see the dash marked area that's involved. I want to go right to that actually we have deferred work on Phase 3 to the end, we moved it basically to Phase 4 and moved Phase 4 up, and the reason is because we want to get the Phase 4 done and get it open for the holidays, and that's been done, so most of the work is still pending on Phase 3, it'll be done, start up right after the holidays. Phase 4, this smaller section between Nicholas Oak Drive and Woodlands Drive, and basically that pavemented area. Now, again, stormwater works down, curb gutters replaced, pavement's in place, still have final surfacing and striping, and we do have, the trail and the sidewalk are not, the sidewalk, sidewalk's done, but the trail is not complete in this area. And we have an obstruction that we're working out right now, and I want to talk about pole and a water meter location, that's being required. So real quickly, now this is Nicholas Oak Drive, on this drawing, and Woodlands is this location, so we've blown that area up, show you where the pavement's going in, where the trail is going in, and the sidewalk is down here. But what I've highlighted in red is there's a power pole just outside of the trail location, and there's a support pole right next to it, and then we have some cabling system, and we have a water meter box here that are a problem from doing the grading work, and I want to show you why. This is a picture, you see the power pole here, and you can see the cabling system, and if I go here, here is the water meter box, power pole shown there, and then the other power pole, it's a little further back. And what the concern is, we have, the trail's going to come right through here, and all those, those things are clear, it really leaves a slope that's, that's, we can't really mow, it's a problem, so if I want to go to, show you drawing of a typical section at that area, and the dash line is existing pavement, existing grade, it was out there, the dark line is where the roadway and, up to the curb line here goes, and then this is the grading behind the curb line. What I've shown in the dash yellow is the location of the existing power pole, and the concern is, we, we can grade around it, but it probably would expose that pole to the elements, it would, probably not enough depth to maintain it. So we're talking with OG&E about relocating that pole back a few feet and increasing the depth, which I show here in the dark orange. And then, then we'll be able to grade this slope back as shown. What I show in blue is if that was not workable for scheduling or for some reason, then we would consider extending a retaining wall along that area just outside the trail, and that's, that's an option, and we maintain the slope up here. So that's an option that was considered, but at this time, and I have discussed it with OG&E, the plan is to relocate the pole and to make that grading, so this pole should be relocated in near future, and then hopefully then we'll be able to grade this.
Is it just going to affect one pole?
There's two power poles there, actually it will affect one, they'll just move this one, the other one they think is actually deep enough they can slope around it, so yes, one power pole would have just, would grade a water meter and, and move the cable box.
Robert, what is the thinking about the trail on one side and sidewalk on the other side?
Well, sidewalk's 6 foot, the trail is 10 foot in width, the standard, it, so we want to maintain a trail through there, but then there's a cost consideration to try to put, and, and there's construction, there's right-of-way requirements if you try to put a 10-foot sidewalk on both sides. So the trail, which provides for bikes and pedestrians, is 10-foot, sidewalk provides for pedestrians, in this case is 6-foot, so we have a.
Is that pretty uniform in all these areas?
It is, yes, pretty uniform, and in, on Willow Road, yes, the 10-foot trail is, is a uniform, as a standard, we try to stay with, with the trail. Sometimes we have to get down to six, if it's just a pedestrian trail, we have a 6-foot trail, and at some cases, because of the right-of-way and the conditions, you have to do that, and you put the bikes into the street, which is done on East Broadway. Bike lanes in the street, not on the trail, the trail's 6-foot. Here, we have the bike lane, we'll be on the trail, it's a 10-foot trail, same as on Cleveland Street. Now, Cleveland Street, the sidewalk's just 5-foot, which is the standard. We're a little wider here with the 6-foot in this project because of the ODOT standard.
Is that done by the contractor or the trail machine that the city of Enid has?
Well, these are, since this is ODOT, well, this one's already under contract, since it's an ODOT contract, it's done by the contractor. Yeah, we don't, we don't really want to mix, we're not in a position to mix our work in with their contractor. Roadwork schedule, okay. The project started February 13th, 2017, originally had a 300-day contract time, we have had some weather and utility issues, it's added about 91 days to the contract time, we think the holiday delay in weather could add another 45 days, but even under all, all those, the contract end date is estimated at April 30, 2018. May well be done and open before that, but this is the, this is the approximate contract date anticipating we'll have some more weather days.
When we have these type of delays, the contractors, are they charged for, penalized, or?
If they exceed, if they exceed this contract date, there, there is penalties for those, yes. These changes were based on weather conditions that were set out in the ODOT contract, they actually allow, based on weather, to close the work in December and February, so they're based on, on that, and then we did have, unfortunately, we had a utility, all the utilities were relocated, but we have utility that went in and located utilities after our right-of-way plans were done and before the construction took place. In theory, they were supposed to be clear, but when we found the field, they didn't, they didn't get as clear as they were supposed to, so we had to delay the work a little bit to let them, to make, to have them relocate their utilities. And it was unfortunate, they came in after all the road was clear, they put the utility in, they had the plan, they knew where to put it, but it, there was a communication problem there, required some more. So those days, the contractor or health work, he's not accountable for those days. But yes, this is the contract date, if exceeds that, there's penalties.
Hey, I just want to clarify too, there have really been two delays at the request of the city on behalf of the businesses in that area that generate the sales tax that we live on. We delayed the start, which is why we started in February, instead initially we were going to start the previous year in the holiday season, and then we've done it again now, and I think that was still a wise move, will still be done by April. But Robert, I also recall, didn't we put an incentive in for Cummins or whoever the contractor was if they finished early?
Yes, there is an incentive in the contract.
Are they going to qualify for any of that at this point, or, we don't need to speculate about that, but that is in the contract.
They may, this is the, and this, this is the projected contract date based on whether dates may occur, if they, yeah, if they, if they, if they get in early, and I think there's 30 days is, I think, the max, but if in that 30 days, I think there is a, there is a thousand, $1,000 a day. But if in that 30 days, I think there is a, there is a thousand, $1,000 a day bonus for getting done days early.
So does that date include that incentive for them, or is that the date if they don't collect the incentive?
That's the date if they don't collect the incentive.
Okay, so that's where you were saying, if they get done earlier?
Mm-hmm, yep.
They have a financial incentive to get done earlier.
That's right, they do.
Robert, what, and some of these roads where you feel seams in the road, what, what causes that?
Two things, well, the pavement, what caused that is the change in temperatures, actually, pavement. Typically, we put down, what is PC concrete pavement? PC concrete, and we put joints in it to begin with because we know it's going to move. Asphalt pavements will develop joints over time because of the expansion and contraction of the pavement.
It always seems like they're in the, you know, just, they're in a certain pattern, I mean, there's-
Well, it's because they're, yeah, they come out at a certain length because that paint will stick together at a certain point. It gets stressed at a point, it, it will fail and crack. And there is a lot of cracks going on right now, which is what we do to try to maintain those roads. Operation's doing a great job of going out and sealing those cracks, keep the moisture out. Want to keep the moisture out, keep the, the base from being, being softened and that really, when that happens, then the pavement starts dropping and we get a lot more of those. But the payment, all payment, payment is, that's what temperature. And over seasons of a number of times, the asphalt pavements actually lose some of the flexibility over time. And the concrete pavements actually walk, they'll move based on, on the pavement, so they will, cr- seams will open up. So crack seal is an appropriate way to maintain the life of those-
So when you're building a road, you put a seams in ever so, ever so far?
PC concrete pavement, we put construction joints in because it will crack, and we define where those at, and they're nice square, and we maintain them. Asphalt pavement, you can't define, typically, you put that in on a smooth surface, and it stays smooth for a long period of time, but eventually, it will open up and crack too because of the temperature change. And then you just do maintenance on it. And if you look at our arterial street program, which we mill and overlay, I'll cover that for a minute. We mill and overlay, we, we actually anticipate that the life of that, that mill and overlay is about 17, 18 years. And we'll have to go back in and re-mill and overlay those roads at the end of their life. And the reason is, that pavement is, is, is going to, because of the design. And these aren't full-death payments, and a lot of arterial streets are built up over time, there's asphalt buildup payments. So they never were, the subbase was never prepped, they never got a full-death pavement, we just build them off. And we maintain them by mill and overlay, which is a good practice, keeps them smooth and level every 17, 18 years. But after about five, seven years, you'll get some cracks developed, you do some crack seal. After about 10 years, you probably should come back and do a surface treatment. And then seven, eight years, we're going to go back and resurface them.
What is the life of a good concrete street?
What's the life? It's had to maintain, of course, but unknown. But we would, we would anticipate on our local streets that we would get about 75 years before we had to go back and do a major replacement on a, on a PC concrete street. Now, on arterial street, on an arterial street, you won't, you won't get near that life. Because you can get, if you get 75 years of life, that pavement's probably pretty rough at the end of its life. But on a local street, you probably can live with that. But on a collector and arterial, you probably, you probably can't live with that. And those, even on the PC concrete streets, you probably, you probably, it, it, it's, you would get in somewhere 25, 30 years and you'd probably go and do a surface treatment, mill and surface, a surface treatment.
Now, Robert, did you say for asphalt, the rule of thumb that we use is 18 years for a mill and overlay? Or what, what would you say it is?
17 and a half, our math said it's 17 and a half years, that's where our math came out, when we go to math. So it's got to be, and, and each road will be different. On average, we 17 and a half, some will be 15, some will get 20, depending on how the base prepares. But somewhere in that 17, 18 years, on average, we should be looking to go back to those roads. It's not exact science, unfortunately.
Does earthquakes have an effect?
Not to, not that we've been able to tell, not that we've been able to tell.
I ask that because, you know, on foundations it does, but flat work, I was just wondering. I know the steel's in there to help sustain it, but does it?
It's, of course, if you have, we have a mill told in our streets here. If you had a substantial earthquake, of course, and it moves, starts moving earth, it'll move the pavement as well. Because it will, they move, when it moves earth, then they, then they, the strain on the pavement increases and it will break. Certainly, if you have major movement, it'll affect it. But all I can say is, the earthquakes that we've seen, I haven't seen the effect of it. There's, there hasn't been any reports of major pavement failure due to earthquakes that we've been able to record.
Still be, still be dirt.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five, discuss minor revisions to the actual municipal judge ordinance.
Yes, this ordinance that we're looking at, if we need a judge for a particular case, it doesn't happen very often, but it happens occasionally, when both of our judges have conflicts, then the ordinance would provide that you, Mayor, could call a attorney and ask them to serve as the acting judge. And the ordinance provides a $200 an hour fee. By doing it this way, it, you know, it's kind of, it takes negotiating with each individual attorney out. You just set the fee, I think at $200, we won't have a problem getting a good person. And then it also allows the attorney just to bill us for the time, and we don't have to enter into a contract. So it just simplifies the procedure.
For, you say, say the attorney or the judge?
For both.
Okay.
But-
The judge and the attorney will be paid the same? If we have to call, call in a judge?
If we call, if we call the judge, if we have to call the judge, then it actually also probably makes it easier for you, Mayor, because you just call, you know, Mr. Smith and, or Mrs. Smith and say, would you be willing to serve as an acting judge in this one particular case? Our ordinance says that you'll get paid $200 an hour. And they'll say yes, and then they'll go, and then they'll send, you know, a, a bill to us.
That's a lot better than what we have now.
Yes.
Do I have to negotiate everyone?
Yes, because then, you know, what if, what if the person you're talking to says $500? That seems a little tough, but you've just asked them, you know, so it's just, this makes it simple. And then since it's specified, that, since it's specified in the ordinance, it will also make our chief financial officer happy, because then she knows exactly how to pay it.
Are there any special qualifications that the attorneys need to have to be appointed judge?
Well, actually-
A JD?
Well, you actually can appoint an acting, a judge without a JD. But, and, and, but if you do, then you can only assess, they can only assess a $50 fine. So in general, we've always-
Keeping members of the bar?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And in Oklahoma, a person licensed to practice in Oklahoma. But other than that, the mayor has lots of authority on this.
Thank you.
Is that all of number five?
That is.
That's the benediction. Item six, we are adjourned, we'll meet upstairs at 6:30.
Thank you for joining us for the Enid City Commission Study Session. If you have any questions or comments, visit our website at enid.org.